Welcome to the Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. You must fill out a speaker request card in order to address the City Council. The agendas and speaker request cards are located in the back of the council chambers. Please drop your completed card in the tray next to the blank speaker cards. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to the city employee at the back of the room. You may check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to let council know your opinion without having to speak. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, please contact a staff member if you need any assistance. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and tell us your name for the record. You'll have a maximum of three minutes. The timer is on the screens visible from the podium. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook, YouTube, X, and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Follow the city's social media pages so you don't miss out on all that's happening in Goodyear. Thank you for coming to this meeting and being an active part of your city. And remember, it's a great time to be in Goodyear.
I'd like to call the regular meeting to order July 1st, 2024. Go ahead, Mark. Everybody present? All right. All right. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Almighty Father, please provide wisdom to all of us on the dais that we make good decisions for our citizens. Also, we have a major celebration coming up this week, the Fourth of July, our Independence Day. Please have a hand over all of us out there. Please keep our residents safe, everybody in the community, our public servants, our first responders that'll be going over, and we're making sure everything happens on time and correctly at the ballpark. And in your name, amen. Let's see what we got here. We have two communication items tonight. First item is to recognize Goodyear CERT team, Spring 2024 class graduates. Go ahead and come on up and introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Woodard. I'm the Emergency Manager for the City of Goodyear. And the resilience of a community starts at home. And with that goal and mission in mind, the Community Emergency Response Team, CERT Program, educates citizens about disaster preparedness for hazards that may impact our community by teaching basic disaster response skills such as fire safety, home utility safety, light search and rescue, team organization, and disaster medical operations. Using the training learned in the classroom and during exercises, CERT members can assist others in their neighborhood or workplace following an incident when professional responders are not immediately available to help. CERT members are also encouraged to support emergency response agencies by taking a more proactive role in emergency preparedness projects in their communities. I'm proud to introduce the Goodyear CERT graduates of the Spring 2024 class. And here tonight with us, we have Alan Esperanza. We have Nathaniel Neal. We have Margaret Katie and Sandra Perez. And other graduates who could not attend this evening include Drew Radosavich, John Vader, and Rita Vader. On behalf of your Fire Department, the city, and your community, I want to commend all of you for your commitment to help when most needed. Thank you for completing the course.
Congratulations. Say right there. All right, the next item is recognition of our lifeguards. Give them a chance to come on down.
That's a big team. About 120. That's amazing.
Yeah. I appreciate you all coming down.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mike Fiedle. I'm the Recreation Superintendent, and I supervise daily operations for the Goodyear Recreation Campus. I'm excited to come before you tonight to recognize the lifeguard staff at the GRC for their heroic efforts stemming from an incident at the Goodyear Recreation Campus on June 5th, 2024. As you know, the GRC is the hotspot in Goodyear. We see over 420,000 guests per year, and during the summer, we see over 2,000 guests per day, many of them coming to enjoy and cool off in the Aquatics Center. We hire over 120 lifeguards each summer to ensure a safe and welcoming environment for everyone that comes into the facility. Now, some people may think that lifeguarding is a cool, easy job, right? Get a good tan, sit by the pool, maybe watch some kids around water, but it's quite the contrary. Our staff, as you can see, go through rigorous training to prepare every single day to keep all Goodyear residents safe when they come and visit the pool. We have over, we have 127 lifeguards, and they conduct 30 hours each of preseason training. They do 16 hours of in-service training every week, and the in-services consist of skill building, reviewing the emergency action plan, and going through drills. On top of that, we do daily drills, we do weekly audits for the guards, and in the preseason, we partner with Goodyear Fire and PD to do a mock drowning drill, so that way we know that we're prepared just in case an incident does occur. And all of this is in the name of safety and preparedness for our staff. On June 5th, 2024, the lifeguard team had to put those skills to test in a big way. At approximately 2:40 PM, the staff activated the EAP, the Emergency Action Plan, by blowing their whistle and jumping into the water to rescue a 10-year-old child. That child was completely unresponsive when he was pulled from the water. Staff immediately began to give rescue breaths and life-saving CPR. After several cycles of CPR, the child miraculously opened their eyes and began to breathe on their own. Staff continued to provide care until Goodyear Fire and police arrived, and he was transported to the local hospital for extended care. The child did spend the night in the hospital, but I am ecstatic to report that he made a full recovery, and he even stopped by the REC Center a couple of weeks later and signed up for an adaptive swim lesson for us in our program. The successful outcome of this incident is a direct result of the exceptional training and dedication of all of these young people before you tonight. Their bravery and quick thinking in the face of crisis absolutely saved a life that day. From the guard jumping in the water, to the guard that called 911, to the guard that gave compressions and life-saving rescue breaths, all of them had a critical part of making that save that day. They helped console a frantic parent, and each of these kids here tonight are responsible for that little boy being alive and home with his family tonight. I can't thank our staff enough for everything that they do for us, but in this incident, they absolutely are heroes, and I would like to recognize them tonight.
Give a hand.
This time, I'd like to turn it over to the Mayor and Council for comments.
And then, I'll tell you what. How about some comments first during the shot? How about that? Anybody like to make some comments? Go ahead.
I want to say thank you to all of you. Oftentimes, we hear about the news about young people doing this, doing that, and I think you are a stellar group of young people, and thank you. And you are role models for our citizens, no matter how old they are, and because of you, that little boy and so many others, you know, they're going to get another chance to go swimming. So, you're life changers, you're lifesavers, so thank you.
So, I just want to thank each one of you. When this incident happened and we were notified that there was a possible drowning at our recreation center, our hearts just stopped. We know what you went through to save that little boy, and we just want to thank you, and we wanted you to have this recognition because it's so important that you know we appreciate all that you do. I have four youngsters, they're all married now, but when they were in high school, every single one of them was a lifeguard at a local pool wherever we were stationed. And they would come home telling me, well, we didn't have to save anyone today, and we were so glad. But they are trained, and they were ready to do it. So, every one of you are a hero. We want to thank you for all that you do, and just keep knowing that you're very important. Keep your eyes on that pool because you're keeping all of us safe. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
During COVID, we became familiar with a term called essential worker, and you really are essential workers because we could not open up our pools and our programs without you. And I was reading at the beginning of the summer, there was such a high demand for lifeguards and not enough, and we're fortunate that we were able to hire the best of the best. It's a tremendous responsibility. You rose to the challenge, and we're so proud of you, and we're so thankful.
The same thing. Thank you so much for all your hard work and all that you do. I have three kids, and I definitely feel safe having them swim at the REC Center. So, that's the credit to all of you and your hard work. So, thank you so much.
Councilmember Gillis?
I'm just impressed with the age of all of you and that you've all stepped up to want to be a part of your community. I think that's awesome, and I think it's awesome for what you did, and I just want to say thank you very much for everything you did.
Councilmember Stip?
Trying not to reiterate what everybody else has said, but, you know, I think you stand here tonight thinking I just come and do my job, and I just go home, and I don't know that you really realize the impact that you have sitting, sitting at your station or standing at your station or being around, and the impact that you have not only on that one life, but everybody who's there. It's a big, it's a big weight to carry for, I'm going to say, people your age. But it is, your community greatly appreciates you being there, and you should be very proud. Keep up the good work. Continue to keep your eyes sharp. We're all, we're all counting on you, so thank you.
You know, I'm so pleased with our younger generation, you know, when we have Make a Difference Day, you all show up and help on there. We have the Youth Commission that volunteer, and then you all are volunteering and doing the work there at the lifeguard. I tell you, it's amazing. I know, like, like our Councilmember Laura Tano had mentioned, sometimes you hear on the news some things that, but that's not this community. I'm so proud of this community. I'm so proud of our young people that step up to be part of this community, and again, from bottom of my heart, and your council that you're hearing on here, thank you for all you do. You did save a life, which is really, really impressive. Meanwhile, come down, we'll take a shot. Okay. I'm short, so I can stand next to you.
Like, if you stagger every other.
Yeah.
I give everybody a chance to, go ahead and go. Okay, the city clerk, please read the consent agenda. Items three through 10, consent no speaker cards. Go ahead.
I got a question.
Okay. Well, let her, let her go ahead and go through them.
And just for the record, there were no speaker cards.
Yeah.
Number three, approval of minutes. Number four, approval of new Series 10 Bear and Wine Store liquor license for 7-Eleven. Number four, 7390-1035-NORTH-AESTRAE. Number five, approval of a location transfer Series nine liquor store, like liquor license and sampling privileges for Winco Foods, number 130 at 15581 West McDowell. Number six, approval of new Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for the Country Griddle at 330 North Dyser Road, number 101. Number seven, approved budget amendments and related expenditure authority. Number eight, authorize the city manager to execute and approve the Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management Cooperative Agreement for Wildland Fire Deployments. Number nine, authorize city manager to execute and approve the Arizona Forestry and Fire Management Fire Rate Agreement. And number 10, approve the amendment to the multi-party agreement for Brian disposal.
Thank you. Does anybody want to remove or got a question? Got a question? On which one?
Number four.
Number four? Darcy? I guess that's for you.
It's just a quick one. So, I understand that, that 7-Eleven is a drive-through. Is, will there be liquor being able to get passed through the window? Is it a drive-through liquor? Or is it, or can, is that a stipulation where that can't happen?
I don't have the answer to that, and I don't think is the applicant here.
I'm pretty sure in Goodyear, we don't do that, but I just wanted to make sure, since it is a liquor license and it is a drive-through, I just wanted to verify that.
I'm not sure who would have the answer to that here. Anybody?
It would maybe be in the card.
I don't, yeah. I'm just curious if we're creating an opportunity for that, that's all.
I would think they still got to show ID, number one.
It'd be the first drive-through liquor in Goodyear. So, I just, I just want, I just want to verify.
Bill?
Hold on, give him a second.
Attorney's going to respond?
Yeah, I think we'll have to follow up on that. This is a state liquor license recommendation, so I think as far as any regulation at drive-throughs, that would probably have to be in a use permit type of setting, which this is not. This is the city's position on the liquor license, so we'll take a look at it.
I think we've already approved the drive-through use.
Yes.
So, I just wanted to verify, I'm just curious, I'm just curious, can someone drive through there and get alcohol through the window?
We'll research that and get back to you on that.
Okay. So, I know I can't necessarily approach that, or I can't deny the liquor license here.
Correct.
Unless, okay.
Not, not on that basis.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You okay? Huh? Okay. All right, with that, can I get a motion and a second? I see a motion and a second on the board. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, getting a vote? Thank you. I would like to remind council to wait for a motion and a second for a discussion. We have three items for business. First item is to approve Amendment 13 to the Intergovernment Agreement between the city and the Regional Public Safety Authority. Go ahead, please introduce yourself to the public.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Kristy McMurty, Project Management Coordinator for the Engineering Department. Actually, the first two are mine, and I'm going to flow through the presentation. I will pause between them, and then I'll let you take action as soon as I'm done. So, the first action, I'm requesting your authorization to renew our agreement with Valley Metro to provide accessible transit services to our ADA-certified customers that use Ride Choice and Dial-a-Ride. The second action is to accept two gently-used Chrysler Voyager vans that will be used for Before I talk about the accessible transit services data, let's take a look at the ADA service area. The Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA, mandates equal access to ensure the disabled receive the same programs and services that others receive. This is why the city is required to provide Dial-a-Ride service three-quarters of a mile from our fixed route bus along McDowell Road, which is Route 17, and along Van Buren, which is Route 3. But as we found out, when one of our residents in Australia Mountain Ranch came to council and spoke about how she couldn't get to the services she needed without the assistance of her adult son, we, we realized that that coverage was really not enough to serve the city. In 2018, with your approval, we signed on to Ride Choice. Our goal was not only to expand ADA access to the entire city, but also to reduce our Dial-a-Ride costs by offering a less expensive transportation alternative that still met the requirements of the ADA. Dial-a-Ride and Ride Choice have unique service characteristics. On Dial-a-Ride, a customer has to share their trip with other customers, they have to book their trip in advance, they can only book that trip when transit operates, and their destination must be within the three-quarter-mile boundary that you see on that map in blue. Ride Choice, on the other hand, provides a greater flexibility for ADA-certified customers because it offers the trips on-demand, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They can ride alone, and they're not subject to that three-quarter-mile barrier. So, let's look at the data for last fiscal year. The top five Ride Choice trip purposes are dialysis, medical facilities, shopping, business centers, and adult daycare. Ride Choice customers can either receive 20 trips per month for $3 per trip up to eight miles, or they can travel up to 400 miles per month for $3 per trip. They have to stay in Maricopa County, and they can't carry over unused miles to the next month. The chart on the right is our Dial-a-Ride service area. Most of these customers are going to specialized services, and they're going up to five days a week. These trips are services for the deaf, services for the blind, specialized schools for developmental disabilities, and people going to jobs. The data on both charts is through April of this year, and while we do see some peaks on the, on the Dial-a-Ride side, the good news is that Dial-a-Ride ridership is not growing. It's staying flat, and that's mostly because these are customers that have been using Dial-a-Ride for years. It's the service they're most comfortable with, and they just really don't want to change. Another benefit for us, though, is that Valley Metro is actually working on combining the reservations and dispatch for Dial-a-Ride and Ride Choice. And once this process is complete, they'll be able to offer the customer either service. What we expect as a result of that is that more will choose the Ride Choice option because of the flexibility, and that should bring some of our costs down. On the Ride Choice side, we're also looking for a reduction in cost because as of today, the City of Phoenix has joined the service. So, we're expecting that economies of scale will help bring down that cost as well. Mayor, I can pause here and take any questions that council has about Dial-a-Ride and Ride Choice.
Councilmember Stip, you got a question at this point?
It's a commercial. Can you go back a slide, please? That area in blue is the area that we're required to provide Dial-a-Ride services to because we have a dedicated bus line that runs through that area. Proposition 479, this fall, if it is not passed, that bus line goes away, and that shaded dark blue area goes away as well. So, the importance of Dial-a-Ride and its connection to Proposition 479 is very intertwined when we look at maps like this, and that's just our, I'm going to say, our one bus route area, but other communities in the valley will see significant effects if Proposition 479 is in-passed. Thanks.
Councilmember Laura Tano, you got a question?
Just a statement. I want to thank you because a lot of people know my, my father's 80-some years old in Australia, and you were great about helping me set up some of these services and seeing what's available there. So, I think they're great services that extend throughout our city for our citizens, and I think they're very helpful, and I would agree 100% with what Councilmember Stip just said. They're very important that we're able to maintain these services for our older population. As we do these and they change, sometimes our website is a little hard to find stuff on. Is there going to be like an update to the website, like kind of a cheat sheet on this? Because you were great at helping me, but some of that stuff was like, which one do I choose?
Thank you, Councilmember Laura Tano. The five words I got from my deputy city manager was try to talk slow. So, yes, I agree. It can be very confusing, and that, that's actually what we're really hoping when we're able to combine the dispatch and the, and the customer service for both these services. I think we're going to start seeing a lot more people that really understand the breadth of what these services can do for them. On-demand, as we've learned through WeRide, has become huge, and most of the companies that are providing these trips for the Ride Choice service are the Ts and Cs. There's Lyft and the Ubers, and they're, these are companies that are professionally certified to transport people that need a little extra assistance. So, in answer to your question about the website, yes. I'm going to take a look at that over the summer while you're on break and see if there's a way that maybe we can do things a little more graphically, less words, and maybe a better sense, even to your point with my colleague Katie about, you know, helping the public understand sometimes pictures are a lot stronger for people to, to help them figure it out than there are words. And I'm, I'm going to put a plug in for Lenny at the front desk, our resident expert on chairs in the city, that he has really done an excellent job of navigating those questions at the front desk and sending these people to me. So, we've been able to help a lot more people. The other little thing, too, is that with, now that we have WeRide, there's a little bit of a bump in the Ride Choice service also because of that. So, when Lenny will get a phone call from somebody that says, I really want to use Ride Choice, or WeRide, but I can't get that far, I can't walk that two to three blocks to get to my virtual stop, that's sort of a flag. So, he'll send those people my way, or he'll send them direct to Valley Metro, and they'll be able to evaluate whether that person needs to be ADA-assessed, and that usually leads to the Ride Choice option. So, there's a lot of good things that have been coming about since WeRide kind of came on board, where people are getting a little more interested in the services that the city is able to provide to them. And, and I'm going to jump just one more thing because Councilmember Campbell has brought this up in the past. The other good thing that's coming is the ADA assessments are actually going to start expanding in the valley. It's not just going to be that trip downtown to Phoenix where you have to wait, and then you get assessed, and then you're brought back to wherever you live. Valley Metro has heard not just from
Valley Metro has heard not just from councilmember Stip, but also councilmember Klein in Surprise, and several other West Valley cities, that that is just not as feasible an option as it might be for other cities in the valley. So there's going to be a lot more options for people to get assessed for ADA eligibility. And again, this all works in the favor of trying to help people become more mobile, get them the ride that they need. So yeah, we'll be working on the website over the summer for sure. You're welcome.
Councilmember Gillis, do you have a question?
No, I just have a comment. I thank you for everything you do, but you do, you do a lot with all this transportation. I, it's amazing what you do.
Thank you, Councilmember Gillis.
Did you hear me?
Yeah.
I said, "Thank you, you do a lot." Anyway, I think you, I want to put a plug in for Lenny, too, because I don't think he gets enough plugs. He is fantastic, and I love the fact that he's able to do that for you and do that for the people also. So he can gear them in the right direction and then let you know what is needed, so then you can let us know, and we can go from there. He does a lot that I don't think people realize, and I think he's the best, so.
It's a great time to be in Goodyear.
It is. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to move now to, we're going to talk about some savings. So this is kind of exciting. Currently, we have five vehicles in the WeRide fleet. Except for the larger Dodge Promaster, which seats eight passengers, these Chrysler vans seat up to five. Most of the vans have been in service since 2022, and they came online at or around the same time. Most of them are out of warranty. So the vehicles are operating well for not being manufactured for transit services, but we're expecting more maintenance as we move into year three of our WeRide contract. A few months ago, Valley Metro made us an offer that's also going to help them, and they are slightly over their allowable spare fleet, which is an FTA rule. So they are offering us two of their spares to get closer to the compliance for FTA, while we get two ADA-compliant vans that we can rotate into service when we need to do maintenance on the other vehicles. And this will allow us to not have any impact to our customers. They will not experience a service delay. It's important to note, this is not an increase in service. We are still serving the same zone with the same number of vehicles. Our only cost is to wrap them and add some equipment. And with that, Mayor, I'm happy to take any questions on this one as well.
Any questions? Go ahead. You got a question?
So they're all Dodges, right? They're all the same type?
Chryslers.
Chryslers?
Yes.
The whole fleet is the same brand?
In the...
Except for the big one.
In the transit industry, we pretty much stick to Ford Chrysler and, I forgot the third one.
No, ours are all the same.
Ours are all Chryslers, with the exception of the Promaster. That's the larger vehicle, and that is a Dodge Promaster, and that, we can put about eight people in that vehicle.
No, I just think it's good to keep consistent for economies of scale, for maintenance, things like that. And we maintain those, or we use them, we take them to the Dodge dealership to maintain them?
We actually, because Avondale and Goodyear share, we're so close together, we are using rodeo Ford for service.
Oh, local.
Yeah, so we're staying local. It just makes it easier to bring the vehicles back in a timely manner.
No, I appreciate that. I like, I like using local, local.
Absolutely. WeRide's all about local.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
My question is, where will these be stored when they're not being used? Where do you park them?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Campbell. Our WeRide operation is actually located at the Flight Facility on Lynchville Road, south of Yuma, and that's where they'll be. That's where our service originates every day, from both Avondale and Goodyear.
Do we pay rent on that property?
Yes, ma'am, we do. It's part of, it's part of our cost for the service.
Okay.
Anything else?
You know, the only thing I want to add, and it's probably a little off track here, but from a cost standpoint, unfortunately, we have state legislators that love to hit local control to the extent of $5 million for our rental tax. So any contacts that you have down there, to ask them to please leave that alone, because I'm sure that these costs are continuing to rise, and one of our bigger challenges is taking one-time money and making sure it's ongoing because it's an ongoing expense. So we wouldn't have that issue if they would leave us alone, but unfortunately, they don't. So I just, I've got to put that plug in whenever I can because it, sometimes they think one-size-fits-all and it doesn't fit all. You know, it was a significant impact, and that money could have been used to broaden this program.
To your point.
To my point, we're going to have bigger challenges when the next fiscal year, so. Just if you have any contacts down there, just please tell them, if you see them doing any more of that, just tell them, leave us alone. I appreciate that. Thank you. Go ahead.
That is the end of my presentation.
That's it?
Yep.
See any more questions? All right, city can enter a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to approve Transit Service Amendment 13 between City of Goodyear and Regional Public Transportation Authority related to the fiscal year 2025 budget transfer. I see a motion, and I see a second. Go ahead and open for voting. Passes 7-0. On the next item, is that yours as well? You've already done it? All right, so the next item, IGA between the city and the Regional Public Transit Authority, already been done, right? So will the city clerk please enter a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to approve, let's see, to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Goodyear and the Regional Public Transportation Authority, RPTA, for two accessible vehicles to be used for the continued provision of micro-transit services in Goodyear? I see a motion and a second. Any more further discussion? Open it up? Passes 7-0, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Last item on the business, consider adopting the city council discretionary funds policy. And again, I emphasize "policy." Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, my name is Jared Askelson. I'm the Finance Director here with the City of Goodyear. Tonight, we're talking about the discretionary funds, council discretionary funds policy that was included with your packet about four weeks ago. We held a work session. At that work session, we discussed both the amount and the use of discretionary funds. At that time, we received direction that we would table the discussion of the amount for six months, so we will schedule something for December to continue that discussion. We did talk about the use and how currently it was governed by essentially practice and a council guide, council resource guide, but nothing specifically adopted by council. With this policy, though, we have a few things that we're lining out. First, we're establishing the procedures for both setting the amount or changing the amount using the budget process, a supplemental during the budget, or a mid-year amendment to change that. The other thing is we're codifying really the practice that we have today, which is to use our citywide, our citywide administrative policies and guidelines to govern how we do the transactions. So today, when you talk to Cindy about putting your transactions in, she's following those guidelines. This policy now sets it so that we will follow those, so it's just essentially laying out the practice that we've had in the past. It also is setting aside the, or setting up the four eligible uses, so it's in line with the council resource guide that we had before. Travel-related expenses and registration for work-related events, community outreach events and constituent communications, allocations to charitable or internal organizations, and finally, meals and events related to council duties and responsibilities. We are also setting out four ineligible uses, again in line with the resource guide that we've been using in practice for the last countless years. Travel and entertainment expenses that are not work-related, ineligible, items that may appear to be potentially campaign-motivated, any expense that would solely benefit another political subdivision, and finally, any expense that would create a new ongoing commitment. And with that, I'll turn it over to council to discuss and possibly take action on this policy.
Okay, any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Let's see, will the council please enter a motion and a second to adopt the city council discretionary fund policy? I see a motion and a second. Open for discussion. Councilmember Campbell?
Can this money be used to buy something for our office? Our city office?
So...
I read it, and I don't see it.
I don't know that that doesn't mean it can't be done.
So it's not listed as one of the ineligible uses.
So you possibly could.
However, you could not purchase it for personal use?
No, no, no.
But possibly to decorate your office? Potentially, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Loretano?
I appreciate, I read through this and kind of followed up since I was absent from this meeting out of the country, so I do appreciate the conversation that was had, and I think that, I agree with what came forward, and also, there is the provision in there, if there is an abuse of this, there is basically a mechanism that it is taken care of. Is that correct?
That's correct. The other thing is, under the ineligible uses, we specifically say any determination. That is kind of gray area, that the city manager would make a decision with consultation of the city attorney, and if there still is disagreement over that, it can be brought back before the entire council to make a decision on those expenses.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Let's open it up for vote. Passes 6-1. All right, with that, does council have any comments, commendations, reports, current events, or anything that you, in the future? Go ahead.
I went to the night market last night, saw some of the council members there, so it was a decent turnout for how hot it was out there. I saw, I was surprised how many people were there with the heat, and then people was relaxing, watching the band play, and getting food, and supporting the event, so. Saw the mayor out there, and Wally, I know Wally was there, I was there, too, but yeah, it was a good event, so thank you.
Good. Anything else? Yes?
I would be, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the support that I received from the Goodyear Fire Department and the members of Local 4005 during last week's medical emergency, we'll just call it. So I greatly appreciated the care that I received, not only from them, but additionally, the support from the Abrazo senior leadership. It was, it was great, I was grateful for it, so Chief Luiz, please extend my appreciation to everybody. Too many people to name individually, and probably more behind the scenes than I even, than I was aware, so just thank you.
Dale's?
Well, we were at the Change of Command today at Luke. It's really nice, you know, every two years, and unfortunately, they got to go. Ox, or General Ruchov is moving to Colorado with his family, sorry to see him go. But with that, it was nice. Even the governor showed up for the event, which was kind of nice, and typically, I don't ever remember seeing her at any of those events in the past, so, you know, that was, that was really nice. So supposed to meet the new general, I think tomorrow is it? So I got a feeling he's going to be almost, almost all business, it's composed to Ox, but we'll see when we meet him tomorrow. But with that, I don't see anything else up here. The next meeting will be July 8th, and that will be, yes, go ahead, city manager.
I do have a couple of things.
Okay, go ahead.
On the night market, as councilmember Hampton mentioned, we had 54 artisans, vendors, 10 food trucks, 1,300 guests as the... But what I really want to highlight is the Star Spangled Fourth this week. We have the event on Thursday, and we're holding it at two locations. Our crowds have been so large that we are holding it at the Goodyear Ballpark, which the ballpark will have live music, fighter country talent, lawn games, arts, crafts, concession, and food trucks, but also at the Goodyear Recreation Campus with inflatables in the park, DJ playing fun music and food trucks. Both venues venues will provide great views of the fireworks. We are expecting a large crowd, so there are buses that will be running between the two locations, overflow parking at Desert Edge High School and Basis School. I just want to say thank you to PD, fire, streets, everybody, the ballpark, Parks and Recreation, who will be involved in this very large event. It's our biggest of the year, and if you need more information, please visit goodyearaz.gov/events, and you can get more information. Yes, sir?
A quick question, is the water, are the waters, are the bounce houses water bounce houses? Are they street bounce houses?
Nathan says yes.
Okay, it's warm out there.
It's warm out there, yes, but I hope everyone has a very safe Fourth of July and enjoy the holiday. That's it.
Good. Next meeting will be July 8th, and that'll be our last one before our break, correct? So with that, no further business. Meeting dismissed.